Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education here at the beautiful Reed School. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to have Alden, the Vice President of the Student Council at Reed School, will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Well, Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome. And we'll begin our evening with the Principal's Report. Mr. Mendoza, take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. We would like to wish you all Happy New Year and welcome you to Reed School. I'd like to quickly begin by just saying thank you to the families and the students that are here tonight, and also to our staff.
Yep, thank you all for coming.
I am Wamidosa, the Principal of Reed School. This is Ms. Thomasella, Vice Principal. And we also have two students from the Student Council that are joining us tonight. I have Alden Lee and Marisol Lariano. So I'm going to begin the presentation that's right behind you. I'm just going to give a quick overview of what I'll be discussing tonight. I think I'm going to wait for the lights. They told me to wait for the lights. So I'll briefly be discussing some of our school data, just to give a quick update. Also, I'll be talking about some of our parental involvement activities that we have here at Reed School. I'll talk about our Family Resource Center and Reed Before and After School programs that we have. We'll also share about some of the new things that we're doing here at Reed this year. And then we'll end with our student presentation. Students are going to be discussing the Reed Student Council. We would like to begin by sharing out some of our historical data as to how Reed School has performed on the smarter balance over the past four years. Although we recognize that we still have a lot of room for improvement, we are very excited to share that through the hard work of our teachers and our students, we have demonstrated steady growth in both ELA and math for the past two years. As in comparison to the district average in ELA, which is highlighted here in black, last year Reed School performed above the average, and we met our performance target for our ESSA goal. In numeracy, as in comparison to the district average highlighted in black, last year Reed School performed well above the average, and we also met our performance target for the state. We are very proud to share with our staff back in August and tonight with you that Reed School met four out of the five ESSA targets which were established by the state last year. Unfortunately, we did not meet the chronic attendance target, which we have found to be very challenging over the years. I wanted to give a quick example about that and share that back in May, our percentage was at 8.9 at the end of May last year. And then with the last couple of days of school, it started to climb up, and unfortunately, we were at 12.2. But at the end of May, we were well on track to meeting that last year. So we recognize there's still a lot of work there, and we've got to focus on that. We plan to work hard to continue to monitor this target throughout this year. And I'll talk about that a little bit more throughout the presentation. So what now that we met our targets? Well, the state, there's new targets every year. Now we need to make sure that we meet those targets. In order to maintain our steady growth and continue to meet our ESSA targets, in the early fall, we met with our school leadership team to analyze our school data, review the new targets for this year, and devise a school improvement plan to meet those goals. Since then, we have monitored our data, we have met and made adjustments to our school improvement plan to directly address these targets. On December 3rd, Principals met with Central Office Personnel. We reviewed our current beginning-of-the-year data, and were given tools to project and calculate whether we were on track to meeting our current targets. I will be sharing those projections with you tonight as well. I will begin by discussing our chronic attendance projection numbers. So on the far right, our new target for this year is 9.7. Our first slide here at the top, back when we had our meeting, our chronic attendance numbers were at 7.8. And then unfortunately, right before break, Christmas, they went up to 8.9. We're still under the target, but we recognize there's still a lot of work that we have to do for the next couple of months because historically during the winter months, these numbers climb. And because we are a walking school, our students walk. I think that has some effect. And also when there's breaks, we notice like, for instance, this week is, we have a three-day week, so our numbers tend to be lower when we have those breaks. This is a chart that we're sharing just to show how we monitor attendance by each classroom here at Reed, and our CAT team works with our students. Given our current data, we plan on continuing to monitor attendance, and we have assigned case managers to our students that are at risk. These managers have met with these students and devised individual incentive plans with them. We plan on continuing to send literature home to parents, as well as having teachers continue to communicate the importance of coming to school every day. As a chronic attendance team, we will continue to make phone calls, schedule meetings with families, as well as continue to conduct home visits when possible. We also plan to have a workshop to invite those parents. We're going to target some of those at-risk kids, and we're planning to have a workshop and invite them to come in, and we're going to talk to them a little bit about what services we have here and how we can help them, see if we can work with them to get those numbers down. Now I'd like to share our ELA projections. On the far right is our target for this year. Back in December when we met and we looked at our data, we made some projections, and we're currently at 58.4. We strongly believe that this target is achievable by the end of the year. Our math target for this year is 53.6. And we're currently at 51.7. We also believe this target is very achievable by the end of the year. So the good news is that we have four to five months of solid instruction left before we begin testing. As you can see, the projected data indicates that we are close to meeting these goals and that our targets are achievable. We have to remain focused as a school, and we must continue to monitor student achievement data and implement the strategies identified in our school improvement plan with fidelity in order to meet these established targets. For our next slide, I'm going to have Ms. Thomasella, our Vice Principal, talk about our parent involvement.
Okay, so now we move away from data. On this slide, we have listed for you all of the family events that we have done so far. Something new that we would like to highlight is our Parent Coffee Club that takes place once a month. During these sessions, we invite parents to come in for the light refreshments in coffee and learn information on how to best help their children and learn about other available resources within the school. We continue to offer our students multiple after-school program opportunities. Our Family Resource Center provides our Before School Books and Basketball Program and Safety Patrol. During after-school, our FRC provides a Student Leadership Program and an Extended Arts Program. We also have a Food Corps After School Program, which teaches our children to make healthy choices. Our intramural sports range from basketball, soccer, volleyball, and tennis for students in grades five through eight. Our 21st Century Program offers enrichment opportunities such as STEM and robotics for our middle school students. And for our primary grade students, we also continue to strengthen their academic skills through our ESH program. This year, Reed School is committed on implementing our new curriculum District Initiatives with fidelity. As you know, this year we have the NGSS Science Curriculum, the Wonders Program for our K-5 population, the Study Sync for ELA for our middle school students. With all the new curriculum initiatives this year, as a school, we have focused heavily on providing time for our teachers to familiarize themselves with the curriculum and plan cooperatively with content coaches and their grade-level partners. We also continue to develop restorative circles as a part of our morning routine. This allows teachers and students to build relationships that in turn facilitate learning throughout the day. We are also excited to have established our first School Governance Council this year. We are fortunate to have seven parents sit on our council and have partnered with the law offices of Attorney Jeffrey Dressler and Mega Education as our community partner. We had our first meeting in early December and moving forward have many ideas to work on throughout the school year. Now, this concludes our portion of the presentation, and now I would like to introduce the two of our student leaders who will finish speaking about Student Council. I have Marisol Lariano and Alden Lee.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Marisol Lariano. I am the Student Council President here at Jonathan Reed School, and I am a Grade Eight student. I will be explaining the election process for you. First, an informational meeting took place to explain the election process to potential candidates. Here the purpose and position that are a part of the Student Council were discussed. The purpose of the Student Council is to teach civic responsibility to those who participate or contribute to Student Council in any way. The Student Council is also about making students that attend Jonathan Reed feel that their voices are being heard and for Student Council to be a perfect example of a role model and leader that gives back to their school and surrounding community. The four positions that were available for the election were President, Vice President, Secretary, and Historian. The students that were interested in any of the four choices would sign up as candidates for the position they were seeking to obtain. Once students sign up as candidates, they begin their campaign process. At this point, students decide on what position they want to run for. Students use various ways to persuade students to get their vote. Students put out posters and advertised reasons for why they were the best candidates for the position. Can you believe some candidates went as far as trying to get votes by passing out treats and goodies? Reed teachers are also a part of electing process. Teacher votes help ensure the candidates possess the qualities that are representative of a strong leader and are in good academic standing, as well as a positive role model. Each candidate wrote speeches to present to students and help gain their vote. This was done in our gymnasium, as you can see on the PowerPoint in front of our middle school students. Students vote after the speeches and place their vote in a ballot box. These votes were counted, and our new officers are announced and created. These are some things that take place during the monthly meetings. We have two teacher advisors, Ms. Baracko and Ms. Lawson. The President and Vice President meet with advisors weekly and create agenda. The Student Council Body meets bi-weekly. It's composed of 28 students from grades six through eight. We discuss leadership and the planning of school events to engage students and fundraising. We meet with the Principal after the Student Council Body meets, and we discuss our ideas. Now I would like to introduce my Vice President, Alden Lee, that will speak to you about our activities, fundraising events, and upcoming projects.
Good evening. My name is Alden Lee, and I am the Student Council Vice President here at Jonathan Reed School. I am currently in sixth grade, and I will be explaining the leadership and fundraising activities that take place in the school. We plan and coordinate fundraising events. The purpose of these events is to raise money for middle school activities like school dances, PBIS rewards, field trips, and end-of-the-year activities. Examples of these fundraising events are Festive Friday, the Pumpkin Raffle, and Penny Wars. Part of being a Student Council member is being a leader. We do activities to polish these leadership skills. Some of our leadership activities include anti-bullying presentations to all the classrooms to teach that bullying is not an okay thing. We implemented a school-wide 25 Acts of Kindness that we announced every day during announcements. We held a school-wide toy drive with the FRC and Parent Liaison to benefit a local family shelter, as well as families in need within the community. Our upcoming projects include monthly theme school-wide such as Recycling and Earth Day, Anti-Bullying Pledge for the Middle School. And the Principal has communicated to us that as a school, one of our goals is to reduce chronic attendance. We discuss working with the school CAT team, which is the Chronic Attendance Team, and mentoring students that have at-risk attendance. We plan to reach out to Powell and the Waterbury Police Department to present to our students about the dangers of street life. We plan on asking city leaders to come and present to our Student Council in leadership and community involvement. So don't be surprised if you get a call from one of us asking you to come down and present to our Student Council. And this concludes our presentation. Thank you, and have a good day.
I quickly wanted to recognize the two advisors that are here that work with our Student Council. Ms. Lawson, if you just want to raise your hand.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Baracko, who work with our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for our Principal or Vice Principal? It seems like you're on track and everybody's moving in the right direction. Okay, Vice President, Harvey.
Well, you know I have to say something. Reed School is near and dear to my heart. But first, before I go into, and I'll be brief, but I am just really proud of Student Council President, Vice President. This is your training. I think I said to the Vice Presi-- Alden, is it? Okay. That this helps shape you for later on. You don't realize really what, you know, where this is going to lead. And I can recall being in those same seats, not at Reed School, but just there, and didn't know where this would lead to, et cetera. And lo and behold, later on, you know, it led to politics. So you, both of you, keep on doing-- the public speaking is really important. You're always going to be nervous, but the more you do it, it's like a muscle. The more you do it, the more you develop it. So please, and you want, I'm here. If you want me to come and speak, fine. And in fact, I can get you some more members from the community that will be glad to come and to speak to you. So great job. Let's give them another hand. All right, so briefly, this is largely for the benefit of the Superintendent and Dr. Biles and Ms. Epperson. And just giving you some history, just real quick, regarding Reed School. Back, I think it was 1990, I was out of Waterbury. I was not living in Waterbury due to my jobs, et cetera. And I was asked to come back to help support a school, building a school in the North End. At that time, the Board of Education was trying to decide where they were going to build a new school, a pre-K through eight school. So I was asked to come back because I was very involved in the community when I left. So the big push was where were we going to put this school? We wanted it to be in the North End. We won that battle. And so then, in the North End, where was it going to be? So we looked at various spots where we were going to, the location, et cetera. This spot, for those of you who are not from Waterbury, was one of the least that we were looking at because of what was here. And, but because of the, if you come into this school, you see how important the location is because you see it. You know, coming down North Main Street, it stands out. So we got this location. So the school was built, and then it was who was the school going to be named after? The community pushed for Jonathan E. Reed. He was Minister of Grace Baptist Church. And the reason why, and the importance here is that it was, this is the first school named after an African-American in the city of Waterbury. Out of 30-something schools, this is the only school that is named after an African-American. You need to clap for that. I'm sorry, you can't be quiet on that one. The reason why we selected Jonathan Reed, Reverend Reed, is because first, he couldn't teach here. He couldn't teach in Waterbury because he was African-American. And he was brilliant. Reverend Reed was brilliant. He wound up being, serving on the Board of Education. He also was a professor at Yale, all right? And the community came together because there were other names that were going to be, that we were toying around with, but it was Jonathan E. Reed, and we are so proud of that, and the community is proud of that. Next, the community. The first day that this school opened, it was so wonderful to see parents walking their kids to school. And that's what we wanted. We wanted the neighborhood school. And pretty much, we have how much, how many walkers for the school? It's about 90?
About 95% of the school.
95% of the school walks to school. So we were so proud to see that. So just wanted to give you some history on why this school is so important. You know, the community is just so proud that this school is here, and, you know, we are just proud. So we are very pleased with what the Principal's doing, with the Vice Principal's doing. Any staff members here tonight? If you're here, stand up. Stand up. Stand up. Don't raise your hand. Stand up. Let's give them a hand. Just want to thank you for all that you're doing, and just know that Reed School, doing things the Reed way, is the way to do it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, Mr. Mendoza, I want to thank you and your staff and our wonderful students, the families and the community that are here to celebrate in this evening's board meeting. I commend you for the job that you're doing here. I'm very proud of the students, Marisol and Alden continue. And I have to brag a little bit about Alden because he also serves on the Superintendent's advisory, which I plan to continue to expand to include more of our middle school students as well. But he is the only middle school student on a predominantly high school student advisory and does a fantastic job. So I'm very proud of you, continue the great work, and thank you very much for sharing this with us tonight.
Beautiful.
I'd like for you to join too.
Beautiful.
All right. The invitation is out there. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Do we have anybody who signed up for public speaking? Commissioner Vanstone, anybody sign up? No, okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wished to speak who did not, was not able to sign up? Seeing none? Thank you. Number two, Committee on Finance, request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education, 2018 Low Performing Schools Bond Funded Grants Round Two. Louise Brown?
Good evening.
Good evening, Louise. How are you? Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you all. Well, we're here with the first competitive grant.
You have to talk into the microphone.
We're here with the first competitive grant request of the year. It actually is a request for your permission to submit 14 separate school applications for the Low Performing Schools Bond Funded Grants. Once again, the focus of our grant is technology. This grant is intended to support improving teaching and learning in our lower-performing schools. The schools are listed in the documents that I forwarded to you by way of the cover letter and grant highlights. And essentially, the items that were selected for the projects were chosen with a focus on improving access to Internet resources with our ever-increasing number of devices on our, on our systems. We need more wireless access. We need some additional smartboards to replace old smartboards that are no longer useful and unable to be replaced with expensive bulbs moving to those panel systems that Will Zuda has explained to you before. And some Chromebooks to support the new ELA curriculums in the middle and high school curricula. So that essentially is the basis for the grants. Unfortunately, the amount we can apply, for which we can apply, is limited to $125,000 per school for each of the 14 schools. Altogether, our applications will total $1.75 million, but each one will be considered on its own individual merit, and a decision will come from the State Department of Education. Thereafter, the state's recommendations will go to the Bond Commission for the Bond Commission's consideration and subsequent approval. Are there any questions that I can answer?
So this is a yearly competitive grant from the state? Is it a competitive grant?
It is competitive, and they held a competition in 2016, 2017, 2018, in the beginning of the year, and again toward the end of the year, they released this Round Two for 2018. So this is the fourth round, and the first three rounds all told, Waterbury was awarded over $6 million to support educational technology.
Thank you. It seems like you're working hard for us. Thank you very much. Any questions about the technology? In terms of the big picture, it would be helpful, I think, to the Board at some point to have like where we are with technology. You know, I know we do hear these grants, and we're very happy to hear about them, but big picture, where, I mean, how far do we have to go?
Exactly.
To really be a 21st century school?
Right. I think it would be advantageous to ask Will Zuda to come and address where he thinks we stand in terms of the most recent improvements and his next steps. And I do know that you've all approved the 2017 Technology Plan, which goes for five years. And I did want to comment that the work that we're doing through these projects does support the initiatives in that five-year plan.
That makes a lot of sense to align it.
Right.
But I think that would be helpful for us.
But I will share that, and we can get a report back to you as to where we stand and how we're doing on that plan.
Okay.
Dr. Ruffin? Also, I will ask our Chief Operating Officer, it's in his department, and he's going to follow up with that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, next.
I'm sorry. I do want to thank Louise. She does an excellent job in really being very thorough in applying for those critical grants that help us to not only bring in some technology, but to continue to renovate and to replace technologies as they age out. She's very thorough in doing that, and because of her efforts, I believe, we do get a lot of competitive grants that we otherwise would not have gotten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is time-sensitive. We do need a consensus vote tonight?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm missing that.
Not a vote, but is there a consensus? We're good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Go forward. All right, next on the agenda is Adela Jorge, on a request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Grants. We're into the grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. So we're asking permission to submit applications for our Title III bilingual and immigrant children in need. Children and Youth Grant. The grant is an entitlement grant based on student enrollment, and the different fundings are used for various activities, such as, some of it goes towards funding our staff, some of it goes towards educational technology, parent workshops, and different enrichment activities for our students.
Any questions on Title III? Okay, bilingual grant?
Yes.
Is it all the same thing?
Well, Title III is for all of our English language learners. We have about 2,815 right now. The bilingual grant is specifically for students, the way that the statute is written is if you have at least twenty students in the same school who are of limited English proficiency, and they speak the same language, then you're mandated to provide bilingual education. So, then those students are counted towards the overall number. So, the vast majority of our schools do qualify under that.
And they're included in that number? The 2,000 number, they're included?
Yes.
Okay.
And this year, based on the number of students that enrolled in Waterbury Public Schools who relocated from Puerto Rico, Waterbury was one of several districts that received additional funding. So, it was a total of $400,000, and Waterbury, Waterbury received an additional $74,708. And that's why you see that increase from the 1718 school year of 176, 311, up to 247, 815 this year.
And now, we're applying, this is going to be a new round of grants?
Yes.
Any questions? Any big changes that we should know about in the grant application?
Well, we have additional students this year, but the way that the entitlements are calculated is they have one set amount of money for the whole state.
I see.
So, depending on how many students are reported per district, that's how the allocation is divided.
Gotcha.
So, we never know exactly what the amount will be. I do want to share that with the Immigrant Children and Youth Grant, for the 1719 school year, the original amount was 32,998, but there was a district in Connecticut that turned down the funding.
They turned it down?
Yes. So, the state thought of Waterbury, and they gave us an additional $18,000, which we used really quickly to purchase additional Chromebooks for our students.
Wow, that's amazing. I wonder what district turns down money? That's unusual.
I wonder why.
Any questions? Okay. Commissioner Awad, good evening, happy new year.
Good evening, sorry for my tardiness.
No. Thank you. Go ahead. Dr. Ruffin, go ahead.
I do want to commend Adella and, and the staff, because when you look at the student data, and you look at how our bilingual students and bilingual programs are excelling within the district, I think that's an example of how you utilize your grant funding, and you actually conceive the end product, the results of that. So, not only is she, you know, excellent in making certain that the grant monies are spent appropriately, I believe, kudos to you and to the staff, because there's evidence there in the student performance, and that's what we want to see, not just that we're getting the money, but that we can see a return on our investment. And I, I commend you for that, because it's evident there.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, number four, Committee on Finance, Doreen Viola, our November monthly expenditure.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
So, this is the monthly report through November. Not much really changed from the previous month. You'll see we're surplusing in a couple of certified lines for special education. But you're going to notice that on the next page, our out of district tuition, right now is looking like we're going to go into the red. So, we're trying to control that and, and meet on that. Along with that, you're going to see transportation also going in the red, and a lot of that has to do along with the special education placing for special education busing. So, overall, you know, we'll break out even at this moment, but we will need to go into the contingency and only showing a surplus of 575,000 at this time. But as you know, that this budget is based on balancing off with the contingency. So, this is just basically where we are right now for the month of November, and we'll continue moving forward. Any questions?
Commissioner Awad and then Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Doreen. Last year, I had asked for the reports that were due under the busing contract. There was a, there are clauses in there that trigger financial benefits to the city if buses are late, if they can't provide a bus, I know. So, I'm looking to get a copy of that and see where we are.
You didn't get that? I thought you got that. No?
I never got it.
Okay.
Actually, back when I asked for it, it was determined that it had never been done, and Mr. Ranker at the time promised it would be done going forward. So, if I could, if we could get a look at that as we start to run over transportation, make sure that we're getting anything that is due to the district for those types of issues and service issues.
Sure.
That could add up, maybe not a lot of money, but a little here and there.
Okay, yep. I'll talk to Jeff and, and Mr. Clark.
Thank you. And as another note, I think you all got an email about a meeting that's going to be the ninth. So, for the upcoming.
The Finance Committee.
Yeah, Finance Committee.
Thank you.
I just had a question in terms of the additional special ed expenditures. I was wondering if it's possible, do we anticipate any excess costs, sheer money coming back to us for those expenditures? Or we would, we don't know, we won't be able to?
Well, the excess cost reimbursement that comes in goes to the city, it's revenue. It doesn't come into our budget.
Okay, so, that would not, that would not help us. And the second thing, could you let us know at some point if these are DCF court placements?
Sure, I'll, I'll get the breakdown.
Because we're really trying to track that and, and see.
Yeah, because I believe, Melissa, that, yeah, there's, I think we inherited some of, of these placements. So, they moved in and they were already placed. Is that correct, Melissa? Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because we're really trying to look at that to see if there's a way that we can, you know, work more closely with DCF.
Sure.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vanstone, I forgot.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. The only comment I have is, and I think it was my big push, is why we get these reports as often as we do. But I think we, we may want to reconsider the cadence.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The cadence of when we get these reports, I, I think these first couple of months are, I don't want to call them routine, but to see special ed or busing, et cetera, a little out of whack when we're at this point in the fiscal type year are not surprising.
Right.
So, I, I certainly want the monthly reports, but I think for you to come and speak to us, I think, Madam President, we may want to, and Superintendent, we may want to revisit having Doreen come so often. I'm sure, you're welcome.
To do more quarterly reporting, yeah.
I, I think as we go forward, the March, the April, et cetera, is, is when we really need to heighten our awareness and concern. I'm, I'm not surprised. When, when you talk financial reporting, short term is, it's not really a, a short term type of report to this kind of board. Informational, I certainly want it monthly.
Okay.
However, if we could just take a note to say, maybe Doreen, early on, maybe give us initial report, get the year started, and then maybe get a, a more of a cadence. Sir, if you could take a note also, later in the year is when I think we really need to be concerned, which I think reflects how you reported it to us.
Right.
We're not surprised at the ones you said.
Right.
We may be alarmed. But everything else is, you know, because financial data unfortunately is a little behind, right?
Yeah.
It's not like you're reporting January 3rd data.
Right.
Right? So, it's just a, a point to consider that maybe we want to change the cadence prior, you know, I, I don't think the data we're receiving now really tells us anything. But as the year goes on, it's a different story, so. That, that's the only point I have. So, if you know I'm not pointing to a certain number, you know you got off pretty easy, right?
I know.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions, observations? Okay, I guess you're staying there for number five, Grant Status Report. And I'll just say as a preface that this is one of the reports that we have on the calendar of reports from Central Office that we had asked for at each meeting. So, this is the Grant Status Report. And we have Linda Riddick Baron and Chief Academic Officer Darren Schwartz. Good evening and happy new year.
I believe, they don't have the handout? Well, I'm just going to go through, I know you don't have the handout, but as of January 3rd, which is today, total grant, federal grants that we should be receiving in will total $33 million. Of that, there'll be 11.6 million for Title I, and almost $3 million for Title I carryover. Along with that, there's approximately $11 million for IDEA from the carryover and into the current year of that $33 million. Along that there, we have some Title I SIG grants that we applied for, that we're still waiting award, it's preliminary. We have the 21st Century, which is our after-school. We have Immigration and Youth Education, along with Adella talking Title III. We also have a Title IV grant, it's called Student Support and Academic Enrichment. We have Workforce Innovative Opportunity Act, Fresh Fruits and Vegetables. So, these are some of, oh, I'm sorry, Carl Perkins, I can't forget that one. These are some of the grants that fall under the federal grants that we get awarded. We also are, there's a new grant that we just sent the application. It's going to be for the homeless assistance McKinney-Vento, and that's for the hurricane victims. So, that's another new grant, that's about $72,000. So, in all of that $33 million, that's what makes up these federal grants. We also receive state funded grants that totals approximately $50 million. Of that $50 million, 22.5 is the form of the Alliance Grant, which is the extra ECS funding we get that's put into the Alliance that goes directly to the Department of Education. And of, of that 22.5, almost $13 million of that is what offsets and balances our budget. Along with that, another big grant that we receive is a school readiness grant, that's almost approximately $10 million. That's for 12 agencies, along with our Waterbury sites for preschool. We also, as Louise mentioned, we have the low performing schools. So, right now, we have the low performing schools for 1719, and also the low performing school grant for the 1820. So, those are from round two and three, and Louise said she was applying for round four. We have primary mental health, adult ed in here, priority schools, bilingual, and the magnet grants, along with our Alliance bond, which makes up all those 50, almost $50 million in state grants. So, if anybody has any questions, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought this was passed out.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. At least what I prepared for, there was five grants in our packet under number five. The summary is nice, I would like to receive that summary as well. And if you don't mind, I would like to go one by one for the six that were in our packet.
Yeah, Linda's going to present that.
Oh, should I wait?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we had a pause for questions.
Linda's going to present that.
Great, thank you.
Great minds here. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. I think Carrie's making copies for what Doreen just presented. When I come to you in the fall to complete the application, I give you a summary of these grants. So, right now, I'll give you an update of where we are with most of them, and I think Louise Brown will present all of this again in, in June. So, it's pretty much the same information. So, I have the summer school grant, which we have mandated by the state, and it provides information about our summer school program, which has already happened. It happened in the summer of 2018. And the details include how many students we, we actually were enrolled in the program, what grade levels, how many staff we had, and a little bit of information about the program. Do you want me to go one by one, or you have questions as we go, or you want me just go through each one of them?
I'll wait, too.
Okay. All right. The other state grant that I have is the extended school hours, one of which was at Reed School this evening. Ms. Tomasello was talking about it, that's our extended school hours grant, which listed our schools who apply for the program. It's optional. A program is very small, it's about 12 grand per school, a little bit more depending on which schools apply. Usually grades three to, three through five, some schools have a lower grade. Very small program that has a big impact. They focus on eye ready, they focus on Lexia for ELA, and a little bit of science activities, which is different each year. There's a little bit of enrichment component to it, but it's basically to help those students that are struggling a little bit. It's not as much fun as a 21st century grant, but it is a much needed grant that has a combination of academic and enrichment. Next, I'll do McKinney-Vento grant. I'm sorry, then I'll do priority school, this is the last state grant. Priority school grant covers certain categories, it comes under the Alliance Grant now, it used to be a separate state grant, but now it comes under Alliance. It is a $2 million grant, it covers a lot of things that offset the city budget, basically that's what the grant's. And they, they identified schools that were considered priority school districts a long time ago, which is now why it's under Alliance. And it covers the things that we do on the Title I, it covers the State Street and Enlightenment School, because they're not Title I schools, so a lot of things we're doing with those schools are covered under the priority school grant, as well as support staff and regular staff that offset the, the general fund budget. Those are the state grants. Then I'll go to the McKinney-Vento grant, which we were just awarded. Last year, we had $40,000. This year, Louise and Shania Paris asked for $10,000 more, and we received it. And this grant currently helps all of our students have been identified as homeless, and we do things as, as basic as providing uniforms and as complicated as helping them to get ready for college, making sure they have their graduation caps and gowns so they don't disappear and not try to show up for graduation. We try to make sure that we are helping our pre-K students so that they're coming in prepared. Little things that may not be a big deal to us, like making sure they have enough uniforms. And with this additional money, we're trying to make sure that we're helping with, like maybe phys ed clothes this year, because we always take care of uniforms and book bags. And now, we're trying to see what else we can do to help out with those students. Another small grant that goes a long way. Our Title II A grant is a grant that's used basically for professional development and principal training and teacher training. With the ESA law, which is different than no teleph behind, they do not focus on highly qualified teachers, it's more about professional development and teacher training throughout the district. They've taken away things like PVIS and all the support we did on the technology, which is, you'll see in Title IV grant. And that's Title II A strictly professional development pretty much now. The Title IV grant, which I was just speaking of, is what I call the kitchen sink grant. It has a little bit of everything for everyone. There's some, there's some funding for a well-rounded student, there's some funding for technology, there's some funding for the community, there's some funding for the private schools, there's funding for the public schools, and it's all under one pot. So, everybody applies for this grant, everybody gets a little something, and it's, it's pending. We haven't received that one yet. And last but not, certainly not least, is the Title I grant, which is the, you know, over $11 million grant that supports all of our staff, all of our schools, our schoolwide schools. Provides a lot of staff, pre-K to 12, our early childhood programs in here, our technicians are in here, a lot of programs are in here, our set asides are our parent involvement, some of our professional development, our McKinney-Vento, our homeless is in here, and that's all of the, with the Title I fund. We try to break it down by the categories of staff. All of our students are identified, and what most of the supervisors and the support staff and central office staff use the funding for. That's basically what Title I does.
Okay. Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Just on the outset, at least in our backup, I did not have one titled Private School Grant, so if we can get that distributed to us, please. I had actually six different grants.
Yes.
That I had in our backup. that I had in our backup, that I need to question each one, because it totals sixteen million dollars, at least what was in our backup, that's a lot of money. So I'll call out the name, because I was following you pretty well. Your read-off was not in the same order as our handout, I guess we had a fifty-fifty chance of that happening, right? But, so I'm gonna go in the order that I have them, if you don't mind. The first one I have is the summer school grant. It's three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Eight hundred and eighty-nine students. The way I read this, that is one-hundred percent salaries. There's no material, no anything else added to that three hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
No, I'm sorry, that
The summer school?
That grant covers basically three categories, salaries, transportation, and a little, whatever's left goes to supply.
Okay. The description I have on purpose of program does not reference those items, so, which is why my question became, was that all salaries? So I, I think as a board, just so we know, I mean, the grants are the grants, but just so we understand where the money is going, we need to know in that description that transportation and materials are included.
Sure, we can do the breakdown budget page.
Okay. I know we have our big new black book that I actually keep in my car, that I'll go through and see that as well, but I think it will mimic this, so any additional information. I mean, again, we're talking about sixty million dollars. Okay, so, alright, the next one I have in, in my grouping is Extended School Hours. Three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, six hundred and eight students. I don't have a whole lot of description on this one, other than the number of pre-K schools, et cetera. So again, I really don't know where this three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is going, so, again, I'll reflect back to the information I have, the sixteen million dollars. I wanna make sure if we're talking about professional salaries, that we're not also accounting for those in our general budget, which I did not have the opportunity to go back to last year's general budget to do a comparison. So, again, you'll see, this is gonna, going to be the theme of my questions on each one. The next one I have in my order is the McKinney grant. Senator Stu McKinney was a very close friend of mine, a long, long time ago, before he passed. It's fifty thousand dollars annual going through, I believe, twenty-twenty.
For three years.
Pardon me?
For three years, for the next three years.
Yeah, I think it goes out to the grant, if, when I read about it, it was twenty-twenty. But, my only comment here is because this is a very, very, very important population that we deal with here. I would like to see this better promoted. Darren, I'll look at you for that, please. I actually brought this up on a radio interview a couple of weeks ago, and that audience was not even aware that we reached out to our homeless population to give them every benefit, not just financially, but resources that we provide to that community. So, please, in honor of my good friend Stu McKinney, please promote this better. Okay? Thank you. I got a few more, obviously. The next one I have in my order is State Street Enlightenment Maloney and Walsh Priority School, two million dollars. The way I read this, once again, it's one-hundred percent salaries. And the four schools I mentioned, mainly three of those schools are very close to what I promote all the time here, that would be State Street Enlightenment and Walsh. And quite honestly, two million dollars. One, I won't say it's not enough, I'll never look gift horse, two million dollars, but a hundred percent salaries concerns me. There's resources in those three schools that certainly could utilize this. Of course, we need teachers, but I would like to see this go maybe a little further than just salaries. The next one I have in my order, and I don't expect replies tonight, I'm just bringing out my points. The next one I have is the Title I grant, which is a significant grant we received, which is eleven point six million dollars. What concerns me here is there's, I didn't even do the math for the number of salaries that are on this grant. Math in public, it's gotta be in the seventy neighborhood for salary placements. Certainly are those that are entitled to the Title I monies, I would like to see, again, more flow down to just salary positions, and I also don't know on this grant if they are evenly divided, considering we reference number of schools. Is it evenly divided between the schools, or do we ratio that to schools that may be in need of more than another? So if you could take a look at that, I would appreciate it.
Well, there's a federal formula that I'll make sure I include that.
The federal formula would tell us where it goes?
Yeah, the federal poverty formula we have to use.
Okay, thank you. The next one I have is Title II-A, and I think it was even mentioned that this is mostly staff. Now, although a number of schools and a lot of partners, which is great, I read through the description, which gave me between six and seven staff, some has moved for the IT world for staffing as well, and when I did my math, that meant we're spending one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars per staff member that's mentioned in the description. I hope we can find better ways to spend one point one million than on one sixty-three per staff member that's in the description. So if you could take a look at that, I would appreciate it. The last one I have is Title IV, another very important, some great partners with us, eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And when I go through it again, I'm not quite sure, because the description is kinda all over the place, how we're really spending better than three-quarters of a million dollars, almost a million dollars, in a short period of time. And if we do have partners, I would like to see, although we're taking claim for twenty thousand students, which is of interest, because that's more than we have in our population, however, we list in the neighborhood of about a dozen non-public schools. So, that's fine, but I would like to know if we're using our resources to go out and do education at non-public schools, not just high schools, grammar schools, as well as high schools. So those are my comments, it's a lot of money. It's the reason that I actually brought to the attention, and thankfully, we did receive the booklet we received, which was almost an inch thick, and much more detail than I went through tonight. But when we receive this sort of money, and we have a one hundred and sixty million dollar operating budget, by the time we add all this up, we're, we're spending like a half a billion dollars in the city of Waterbury. We need, as Commissioners, to know how we're spending that money. It's very important. I'm not, as I've said in the past, not questioning how we spend the money, but I think we need to know how we're spending that money, Superintendent. We will, and I will speak for myself, we will leave it to the professionals on spending that money, but I think we, we need accountability when we're talking those kind of dollars. Now, I know it's not city money, which is probably what I'll hear, but it's still taxpayer money. None of what I brought about was private grants from private companies. It was all in some way government money. Okay? So, again, I'm not looking for answers tonight, but we really need to start taking a look at how we're spending this money, and of the few comments I made on where the money is going, making sure it's going to the right population. So, thank you, Madam President, it's all comments, I know, I don't think there was one question in there.
I don't think so either, but that's
But I think it's fair that I brought these points up.
Well, and I think these, these are discussions also to be integrated into the budget discussion. The grant, the grant funding should not be seen separate from the whole budget, and how it's all integrated, and I think we're very honest here, we have used a lot of the grant money to supplement our budget for salaries because of the situation. So I think we've tried to be creative, but I think we have discussed, you know, the integration more in the Finance Committee, and we can certainly hone in on that, which I think is important, so thank you. Any other?
Can I?
Yes.
Just add to that, Commissioner, I appreciate your comments, because what I, what I've been working off of is a form that was used for competitive grants, for my entitlement grants, it'd be easier for me just to add the budget page to it, so that you could see by line item that there are salaries, that there is transportation, that there are supplies, that there are things
That would be helpful, yeah.
That at the back page would probably answer all your questions, so that will be easy, because we have all that information, but I was incorporating an entitlement grant into a competitive grant form, so it'd be real easy for me to give you that.
I, I do appreciate that, but Doreen will tell you later that just everything you answer me, I'll find another question, so. But thank you, thank you very much, I, Madam President, I really think that would be helpful for us, to have that matrix.
Okay, I do, Dr. Ruffin.
We're gonna prepare everything very thoroughly, but I do wanna comment on the Title IV and a comment, Commissioner, relative to the number of students enrolled in the program being twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-four students, and that's more than we have enrolled. That is correct, because it's not only the students that attend Waterbury Public Schools, it's the students that we're obligated to also provide services that attend some of the private and Catholic schools that reside in Waterbury that we're also responsible for, because it's a federal grant. And, and that's why the numbers are real numbers, but they're not all the students in our public schools, but they're all students that we're obligated to serve within the city of Waterbury.
And most of my entitlement grants cover both public and non-public.
That's right.
Almost all of them, always, thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Number six, request approval of an agreement between Waterbury Career Academy and Clydesdale Manufacturing Company for a manufacturing externship pre-apprenticeship program. Mike Harris is with us tonight, welcome Mike, Happy New Year.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Commissioner. I'd like to make a request of approval of a contract with Clydesdale Manufacturing, and I did, Commissioner, Ms. Wayne, did Carby Corporation come in on that as well?
Yes.
The Carby Corporation for approval of a contract to allow our students in manufacturing strand to participate in registered pre-apprenticeships along with those facilities through the state of Connecticut.
I think it's a great program. You need our permission because there's city money, are, is there, are money involved?
There's no money involved.
Okay.
It goes, the contract has to be done, it has to be signed by the mayor, approved by the Board of Education, approved by the Board of Alderman.
Gotcha, okay. Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. You and the staff, you know, I appreciate so much everything you do to make sure we promote the apprenticeships, which is really the main part of our mission statement at the school. And to our fellow board members, this is the key component, is getting our, our students out there, getting hands-on work to complement their education, and, and it is why we have Waterbury Career Academy. So, this is where we need to go. I, I hope in the future we have more and more corporations that want to reach out, and, and just so folks know, some of these students will actually receive for their apprentice work greater than minimum wage. We ask the companies to do minimum wage, but many of them will actually reach out and give greater than minimum wage. So, just to my fellow Commissioners, this, this is why we have Career Academy. So, thank you for reaching out, finding these community leaders that will come forward, do this for us, and getting our students out there to, to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, just to follow up, I do hope to be back here within the next couple of months with some more companies that are gonna participate with us.
Great, Commissioner Sweeney.
Mike, you just answered my question, that was my question, and we're gonna see you again for more of these, so.
Yes, the, and just the, the process, the last couple of years is, really after February and March, we start getting more and more interaction with the companies in terms of getting seniors signed into the pre-apprenticeship and get them up to graduation, and if everything works out between the end of the school year through the summer, they'll be offered a job, a full-time job at those facilities.
After talking with some of the students the last couple of years who have done the internships, we're choosing well, apparently, because they are all enthused and grateful for the opportunity, and looking forward to working in the industry down the road, so you're doing a good job choosing well.
And Commissioner Van Stone was correct in terms of some of our students with the wages they are receiving, I believe everyone who we signed up last year was all above minimum wage, and our first graduating class, I'm gonna brag a little, they, we still had, we had seven students sign with Clydesdale, or go to Clydesdale as pre-apprentice, six are there full-time after two years, and they're doing very well. Now they're even, now some of the things they're eligible for, benefits, vacation time and things like that, at age nineteen and twenty, it, it's great to see.
Thank you. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, this agreement with Clydesdale, can you tell us how, how Clydesdale came about to be part of the program, was there an RFP, or, I mean, how, how did they become part to offer this apprentice program?
Well, at the time, going back a couple of years with, with the help of Commissioner, no Commissioner Awad, Mayor O'Leary, they came to me with some list of people to reach out to, some companies to reach out to, and seeing that they're so close to the school, they had availability, there was a need to fill a workforce there, and we reached out to them, and over the last two years, we, last year we sent five students, and I believe four of them are still full-time, so we have, we have ten full-time stu, employees that were students of ours there, so that was how Clydesdale came on board, and Mr. Garth Waite, who runs the company now, Mr. Garth, Bob Garth Waite Jr., has been very supportive, they've been at our college career fairs, they've sat on committees at our school, so they've, they've really vested into what it is we are doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kathy, did you wanna say anything? No, okay. I mean, I think this is absolutely the purpose for the Waterbury Career Academy, and we look forward to seeing a lot more partnerships, we've got IBM down the road, and we've got a lot of other corporations that are, are waiting for us, so look forward to growing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, request approval of an agreement between, is it the same? Are you up again?
We're good.
It's the same thing, so.
That could be, is that for Carby Corporation?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Carby Corporation, it's the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, where is Corby Corporation?
They're in Watertown.
They are, John, right.
I believe it's right on Echo Lake Road.
Okay, good, any questions? The same wonderful opportunity, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, Committee on Building in School Facilities. Number nine, Committee on Building in School Facilities. I was, I was looking right over there, Commissioner Van Stone.
Gee, in this category, imagine looking at me. I just wanna be sure, there's one non-school or outside organization, as we phrase it, that is looking to utilize one of our high school gymnasiums pretty much immediately through June, Monday through Friday, five to eight-thirty, I believe. That particular high school is Friday, 5:00 to 8:30, I believe. That particular high school is pretty much utilized between our girls and boys' basketball, at the very least. I just want to make sure we keep in consideration that our schools absolutely, and it needs to be flexible, because if one, both, hopefully both, actually go on to the state tournament, this gym needs to be available to our students and not an outside organization. And I will throw in the fact that they are grandfathered in for a waiver, so they're also not paying for the time they're requesting. So, please, let's keep that in mind that, you know, and the side effect to that is we're also giving one organization what potentially is all the free time at our facility. One organization. These are the people's houses, I guess we can call them, but one organization, maybe not, should be able to take a six-month, Monday through Friday, basically exclusive use of a facility outside of, hopefully, when we tell them they can't be there for the particular high school's athletic teams. And I'll go one step further once you get into the May-April timeframe. As a former baseball coach, that is also where our baseball teams, when they're able to, by regulation, are able to train, this is also where they would train. So, to lock it up like this, besides all my other no-fee or waived fee, we really need to start taking a look at allowing this to happen.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Makes sense. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Superintendent, update to the board. Numbers 10 through, I guess it's just number 10, and letters through J. Any comments?
Yes, under a comment, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that when I asked my son about his tennis appointment today, he said to me, "Who snitched?" And so, I was completely unaware that he had put in for the position. Actually, even though it's only received on place, I'm going to vote no, or I'm going to abstain just so that there's no apparent conflict of interest. But, it's good to know that all that money I spent on tennis lessons paid off.
We're glad to have his talent.
Okay.
Okay. I do have one comment. Yeah, okay. Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like an opportunity to introduce our new supervisor of pupil services. Some of you had an opportunity to meet her before the meeting started, but I didn't have an opportunity to go around the table. Dr. Tanya Biles has joined us, beginning her work on January 2nd. Darren, actually, Dr. Biles works with Darren Schwartz, and I wondered if Darren would like to say a few words and introduction to her.
Tom already said I talk too much. So, I actually-
Oh, geez, he should talk.
Doctor, but in this case, I can't say enough about Dr. Biles. We are extremely excited for her to be here. She was a great hire for the students of Waterbury. She was probably the most elated person I've ever talked to on the phone after we told her she was hired. So, we are excited as a team. We had a very good meeting today. I think she said a good start, at least that's what she told me. So, I'm going to take it. But, I also prepared with her a few words for her to say to you tonight.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I am absolutely thrilled to be here. I want to thank Dr. Ruffin for even allowing me to go through this amazing process. And also, I want to thank Mr. Schwartz. Everyone has just been extremely nice, very supportive, and just willing to help in any way possible. So, I'm thrilled about that. I had the opportunity to meet, of course, with Mr. Schwartz and talk about some of the things that we need to focus on. My goal here is to make this great district even greater. And some of the things that we will focus on, of course, is providing some meeting and providing guidance to the discipline team, as well as providing strategic leadership for school counselors, and just doing all that we can to help the school staff, make sure that our students and our pupils are in a safe environment and one that promotes school camaraderie spirit, and of course, being in a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Sweeney.
Motion to convene into an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. We have the library for executive session.